Good morning. Today is February 14th and it is 8:30 a.m. and I'm calling to order the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting, and I'd like to start with an invocation. If you'll bow your heads. Well, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for, for the people in this room who come together to do the county's business. Be with us as we do the items, take care of these items on the agenda. Some of these issues are difficult. Be with us as we take care of these and make our votes and help us to make our decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen. We stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to God, the state, the nation, for God, the visual.
All right, we have a quorum this morning, and the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do, see, we have some, a couple of folks signed up to speak, and I'd like to save that for when we go over that item, if, if we can do that. The debate agenda starts with items from our county manager, Scott Johnson. What do you have for us today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item for your consideration is to change the commission meeting from April 4th to March 30th. Typically, we do this due to Masters Week being here and a lot of people being out of town. So staff recommends that the April 4th commission meeting be moved to March 30th at 6:00 p.m.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. That is a customary thing to do during Masters and, and around the holidays. Thank you for having the forethought to get that on the agenda. What's next?
Next item you have for consideration is agreement with Georgia Family Crisis Solutions. This is for treatment services through our judicial circuit. This was a request that came to us from our chief judge. They are desiring to work with this particular company in their felony drug court and veterans court. This is a six-month agreement. I believe it expires at the end, end of the sixth month. Are you correct? It goes through this budget cycle. You can see the scope of the services and the amounts there. Staff recommends approval.
What criteria was used to choose the service?
I'm not sure that they, they go through a, a typical RFP for this. This is professional services, so it doesn't require that. I believe this person or these people have, have actually been working with the judge and with the courts in the past.
There was no mandate for them to look at multiple services, multiple?
Not on professional services. There's not a, there's not a mandate that they do that. You can, but there's not a mandate that they do that.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next?
The next item you have is a statement of work for Civic Plus. This is for our MuniCode. They handle the codification and the online code for our Columbia County ordinances. Civic Plus has actually purchased MuniCode and they're transitioning to an annual fee. So in the past, we would be charged per page or per table, or anytime we made anything to the, any changes, we would get charged for that. Now we have an annual fee that's going to call, going to cover the cost, whether we make a slight change, whether we make an entire chapter change. The annual cost here is $4,645.60. This will be a savings to the county based on higher historic numbers about how much we've spent changing these ordinances, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next?
Next item you have for consideration is Resolution Number 23-05. This is the creation, or requesting the consideration of the Columbia County Public Facilities Authority. To give you a little bit of background, there is an opportunity in the state of Georgia to have what's, what's called a public facilities authority. This works much like the development authority, but it, it works differently. Works a little closer, hand in hand with the county to be able to assist us with, with the building of public facilities. Transportation is not included, but our water utility could use this. Anytime we wanted to issue any sort of revenue bonds, we could use this, this facility, I mean, this facilities authority. They do not have the authority to create, to issue general obligation bonds. So they do not have the authority to saddle the county with any sort of debt in any way. It doesn't go against our debt capacity. There are a little over 60 counties in the state of Georgia that are currently using public facilities authority. And in my conversations with some of the other commissioners, I was a little, I guess embarrassed would be the right word, that I didn't even know about this tool. This was, there aren't many tools in Georgia that get by me, but this one did. And, and now that I've talked to some of the other county managers, I see that, that this is a wonderful opportunity for the county. We have included in the legislation that we're asking for to include the cities of Harlem and Grove Town and also the school board. They don't have to use it. If they do, they would use it on their own. We don't have to use it. If there's ever a time that we want to, we could stand it up and use it. If we don't have a need for it, then we don't have to do that. It's just another tool for us to be able to conduct the business in Columbia County. And with the next item that you have on your agenda, I think it's, it's a good partner to the hospital authority, because their, their authority is going to be limited to issuing hospital bonds only. So if there are any sort of periphery bonds that need to be done, and again, these are revenue bonds, so if somebody else would pay for these, there'd be another funding source, not be property taxes or general obligation bonds, then they would have the opportunity to do this on this authority. This does require local legislation to take place. So the resolution that you have in front of you is actually asking for authorization for the staff to forward this to our legislative delegation, then also to place the legal ad that's required to have passage of local legislation. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
These three points that are listed in this proposed resolution, it doesn't really talk about how it's set up, who's going to be on it, who makes the appointments, when, at what point does that happen?
I, I, I believe it does say that they are made by the, the board of commissioners. On, on this authority, it, they, they shall be appointed by the board of commissioners.
It stipulates five members?
And it says five members.
But it, but it doesn't really get down in the meat of, he gets one, I get one, you get one, or?
I think that would be up, that would be up to the board of commissioners to be able to, I mean, I think the, the probably intent is that each person gets one, but we could actually add that into the resolution if we wanted to.
So now is the time to be sure all those points are, are made, or is there time later after this resolution is passed that we can?
No, there, there is, I, I think that if we, if we do this, we have to place the legal ad, we're going to have to place the legislation or the intent of the legislation out there. We've got a little bit of time to do that, but if it's the will of this board, I mean, obviously, this is going to go to the board of commissioners meeting, whether it goes on consent or debate, and we would have time to make any sort of amendments that we would want to make to it.
Well, the details need to be taken care of before it goes?
I would like to. I would, I would, on this one, I would like to have that taken care of. If there's a question about each person getting one, or, you know, how those are done, I would like to go ahead and have that in the resolution.
Because if we make changes later, it would have to go back to Atlanta.
It would. And, and, and just to let you know, this is not a, a copy and paste resolution that you have in front of you. This one is tailored to Columbia County. We actually went through several other public facilities authorities around the state, looked at the goods of theirs and things that we thought would work for Columbia County and things that didn't. So we can absolutely tailor this even more to Columbia County should we choose to.
I would like to put this on the debate agenda, and that gives us time to each, speak to each other and, and the other commissioners about what we think it, it should be.
I make a motion, we move it to debate.
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
The next item you have is Resolution 23-06. This is to declare the need for the hospital authority. As you know, we've been working with our partners at Augusta University and Wellstar now that are partnering with Augusta University. The Augusta University does have the, the CON for the hospital in Columbia County. It is a sole community provider, meaning that Columbia County does have some participation. We're still working through that process now to determine the exact amount of participation that we will have. But I think the one thing that is clear is that there will be a need to issue bonds on behalf of the hospital. It's, it's our understanding at this point, and again, moving forward, nothing is done until signed and approved by this board. But at this point, it's certainly our intent that any bonds that we issue will be paid back by the hospital and not by the taxpayers of Columbia County. But rather than going to general obligation bonds for this and the county doing that, we felt the need to create a hospital authority. Again, this is another tool that's allowed by the state of Georgia. This is a little bit different in that it does not require legislation to do that local legislation to create this. The county does have the authority to create the hospital authority. The resolution you have before you here today is requesting the creation of the authority itself. There will be a, another resolution that will come to you should you choose to pass this. There'll be another step in this process that will talk about the things that you just mentioned. So how people are appointed, how many people are appointed, actually naming the members of the hospital authority. So you see some of that here in this resolution, but you would see more detail in a subsequent resolution.
And this doesn't have to go to Atlanta?
This does not. This can be done.
Why does this type not get, not have to, but the other one does?
It's just, it's just the way that, the way that they're set up. I mean, some, some, the law gives the county some ability to create certain things, and other things have to be created by local legislation. So.
So this today is sending it to, I would say, debate agenda for, to declare the need for the hospital authority, not necessarily tying us into all the details that are listed.
Correct. You'll have a, a subsequent resolution that would name the members, any sort of qualifications, if you wanted to have qualifications, how those people are appointed, that would be subsequent to this. And, and the, the board has the power to do that.
So we're not tied directly into specific items that are listed in these words right here in front of us?
Um, I, I think that there are some things here that may be required by law, but, and then Chris, I don't know if you want to, you want to give us any?
Second, Chris.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chris.
I don't have it in front of me, but to answer the previous question, hospital authorities are already created by statute. Turning on the light is something that's.
Okay.
That's why there's a difference.
I think there's a question, and if I'm not mistaken, and there may be more questions, but there, there's a question that says that if, if there's a vacancy on the board of directors, that the consideration shall be given as to whether a licensed doctor of medicine or a registered nurse currently serves on the hospital authority of the county. And if there's not a doctor or a nurse, then consideration shall be given to the nomination of a licensed doctor. Is, is that a requirement? Is it a requirement of the law that a consideration be given, or that they have to do it?
That's straight from the statute. The statute doesn't say you have to, but I want you to.
Even if this authority is not to run the hospital, is only to issue bonds, which is a business decision?
Bonds, but in general, you know, you're issuing bonds, and a lot of times you want some sort of oversight. And so when you have oversight, it'd be nice to have someone who.
So doctor and nurse is specifically what's?
It says consideration shall be given. It does not say that you shall be, shall be mandated.
Okay. Here's my question. Thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any other questions?
No. Motion to move to the debate.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. Next?
Next item you have for your consideration is Resolution Number 23-08 to amend the composition of the Columbia County Board of Elections. This resolution, just to give you just a little bit of background here, there's been some discussion about counties our size having a board of elections that is five members instead of three. This is one of those that does require the General Assembly to create local legislation to make this change. So you do have the resolution before you to start the process, giving the local legislative delegation the ability to amend the composition. And the only amendment that, that we're asking for by resolution is going from three members to five. There may be some other discussion, and I'll pause, and I believe you may have somebody that wants to speak.
Can you tell me the genesis of this idea? Where did it come from?
Yeah, so I, I think that probably the biggest thing that, that we've incurred, encountered in Columbia County is the fact that with a three-member board of elections, if, if a member is out sick, or there's something for a member misses, or let's just say hypothetically that you see an abstention, somebody that abstains from a couple of meetings or whatever, they can't conduct the business of the board of elections. It requires all three of them to be present to conduct the, the, the business of the board of elections.
So the board of elections is asking for this?
The board of elections is not asking for this, but the board of elections is aware of it, and I have had conversations with the elections director, and just in, in anticipation that it may be coming, she has already included what it would take as far as training and those sort of things in her budget. So I haven't gotten any pushback personally. I've not gotten anything from the board of elections.
It wasn't, it wasn't Ms. Gay's idea? Who's, who came up with the idea? Where, what is the?
We were originally approached by the delegation, asking if this was a possibility, if it was something that Columbia County would consider. And from there, it was just a matter of taking it to the board and seeing if it's something you wanted to do.
So our entire, you believe our entire delegation is in support of this, wants?
I have spoken to the majority, not the entire delegation, but the majority of the delegation who is aware of it. I have not gotten any specific opposition from anybody on the delegation.
Very good. We have a couple of folks who would like to, to speak. Debbie McCord, would, would you like to say a few words? Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Debbie McCord, 505 Brander Mill Road, Evans, Georgia. I am currently the chairman of the Columbia County Republican Party. I also served on the board of elections during, from 1990 to 1992. So I think I speak with some voice, because at the time I went on the board of elections, this was not a Republican county. So we did have three Republicans on the board at the time, and we had two Democrats. I actually was put on the board by the two Democrats and only one Republican, who was a woman. The other two Democrats voted against, other two Republicans voted against me. So I, I understand what it takes to do and create free and fair elections. And I quite frankly believe that that is the mission of both parties, is that we have free and fair elections where every vote is counted properly. At this, I really don't feel like the expansion is warranted, but my primary opposition is to having the nonpartisan person selected by either the commission or the state legislature. I think that if we go to a five-member board, two picks should come from each party. The third person should come from an agreement between those two parties. Over the past several years, as chairman of the party, I've worked during elections as a poll watcher. I worked the audits, I worked the vote review panel, and I have worked with members of the Columbia County Democratic Party. They are not all crazy radicals. They are very reasonable-minded people who basically want the same things that I do. They just have a different perspective on certain issues. So what I would like to say, and I have spoken to Representative Fleming about this, about the party's opposition to this, and we have a disagreement there, but my big fear under this is that any single election could flip the composition of our legislative delegation or our county commission. So then you would be in a situation where you had members picked by people who, or members could even be terminated by a new legislative delegation or a new commission delegation, which would be very, it would really unbalance the board. Right now, yes, I understand the problem that they referenced about one person being out, making it difficult for the board to hold bit, to conduct business. But I think the best solution going forward is to have, if we go to five members, have two members from the Republican Party, two members from the Democratic Party, and let those four people come together and agree on who the nonpartisan person should be. I think that in this county, with 120,000 registered voters, we ought to be able to find one person that those four people could agree on without having to go through a repetitive process that would eventually throw it to the probate judge. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for?
Okay, and no offense to anybody on the commission or the state legislature, okay?
Untaken, untaken. Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Russell Wilder, do you have some words for us as well?
Russell Wilder, 310 Hazely Court, Grove Town, Georgia. The biggest thing I see with this, five may be needed because of the size of our county. I get that. I don't like the idea of giving anything that should be locally controlled to Atlanta. And all of our members of our delegation right now have pretty good confidence in most of them. Atlanta does not need to be involved in our pick in our board of elections. As far as the commission, I'm up for debate on that as well. I kind of like the, the idea that Debbie proposed, if we go to five. And it's, you know, somewhat partisan in nature. Obviously, we like the way things go here, and it's partly because of the, the political stripe of our elected officials, and we want to keep this county looking like it does and getting better going forward. That's ultimately our concern, but I'm definitely opposed to Atlanta having a pick. It's just, they don't need to be involved. This Columbia County, this Columbia County Board of Elections, let us keep it local.
Thank you. Thank you.
Russell.
Gentlemen, do you all have any?
As I read it, is there any, anything in here that dictates who picks the other two?
Not, not, not at this time. This is just the resolution asking the, the delegation to move forward to craft local legislation. I think there would be an ability for the board to be able to work through that process, but if the board would be more comfortable putting in the resolution how you would like to see that done, I think that's certain, we could certainly forward that as well.
And we have time to work on that between now and our next commission meeting.
I could probably write war and peace between now and tomorrow morning. Yes, ma'am.
I would say we should address that.
We could certainly do that.
So I'll make a motion, we move it to debate, but then we have to work through the appointments.
Second.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, doing that, I will do that with the individual members of the commission. You're not, you don't want to call a special meeting or anything like that. We'll just work with individual members of the commission and try to come up with some consensus. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You've got a lot to do between now and next Tuesday.
I got it.
All right.
24 hours in a day.
Thank you. I have a, a motion to move this to debate in a second. We will address this at our next commission meeting. Next?
Next item you have for consideration is ordinance Number 23-01. This is a request to many of the Code of Ordinances of Columbia County by adding Section 58-10, which is panhandling. This is actually a request that was originally submitted to us by our sheriff, but there were also members of the board that have come to us in the past with issues specific to panhandling. I think probably one of the biggest things that you see here, one of the biggest changes that you see is people that, if you look on the, I believe it's page three, towards the bottom there, you can see that, that number eight, no person shall solicit or pass or a motor vehicle while that person is operating or occupying a vehicle. This really addresses the people that are standing on the corners with signs that are, that are panhandling, some approaching cars, some walking out in traffic. We've had people standing in the middle of Fury's Ferry Road, panhandling. So currently, we do not have that in our ordinance, but I think this gives the sheriff the opportunity to certainly approach these people and now have some sort of ordinance, specific ordinance to rely on. My understanding would be that, that, you know, they would first be made aware that they were breaking the law, and then obviously beyond that, if, if they had to go any further, it would be a county ordinance violation. You can be arrested for a county ordinance violation, but it comes with penalties from magistrate court, not state penalties. So I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is to make it safer for folks that may be engaging in this, and then also safer for our citizens.
But I don't see any carve-outs for Girl Scout cookies in front of the grocery store, or give, give, uh, give Burns the boot. Did I say that right? For the, for the firemen who stand out next to Target. Is that a, is that hurting them?
So what you have, if you see number two there, it says, no person shall solicit or panhandle on private property without first having obtained permission of the owner. So as long as you obtain permission, then you can do that. You, you can be allowed to do that on private property. So if you were at a Publix or a Walmart or Kroger Salvation Army bell ringers, they're actually soliciting, but they have permission from the property owner to be there. Girl Scouts historically have done the same thing. They've got permission from the store manager for the property owner to be there. So I, I think we're comfortable with the language here that those types of folks are protected. I know on our boot drives, that the chief and, and the firefighters that participate in that are very careful to make sure that they get permission, and there have been some times where some store owners say, we know, we'd prefer that you not do that here, and then we don't.
Chief Wallen, are you okay with that? All right, no panhandling from our firefighters. All right. Good. Gentlemen, do you have any other questions?
No.
Move to consent.
This is actually a ordinance change?
Oh, debates.
Yeah, these two readings.
Two readings.
Okay, second.
So moved. Thank you. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Chair?
I think I'm done.
Colonel Kennedy, what do you have for me today?
Ma'am, this next item is an appointment of Ricky Dean to the Animal Services Advisory Board to fulfill the unexpired term of Cheryl Fuller. Her term actually ends on December 31st, 2023. No longer fulfill her term obligation.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. Ms. Reese?
Yes, the only item I have for you today is the annual approval of bank accounts. Attached is a list of all of the current accounts that we hold, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
I have a lot of bank accounts.
But I have a lot of money. I will say that.
Tax rollback?
While, while you're, while you're looking at this, we have been able to work with our local banks. Ms. Reese and I have been working diligently. We move some money around. We're starting to see some really good interest rates now. So we were getting sub 1%, and now we're getting, in some cases, 4%.
Actually, that was going to be my question. Interest rates go up, we should make more interest. Second.
Thank you. So moved. Uh, do you have anything else for us, Leon? Blanchard?
Don't ask him how much money.
How much money are you going to spend today?
Only what's necessary.
Okay, good answer. Okay, tell me, tell me what you got.
All right, well, the first item I have for your consideration actually costs nothing. It's a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with Augusta University and the Georgia Cyber Center. If this one looks familiar, because it is, it was approved by the commission back in September. However, when it was submitted through the approval process or the signature process with Augusta University, it was discovered that there was another layer of legal representation that, that said, no, 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 you can't do this, because the original agreement had language in it related to an annual renewal happening automatically. For the state of Georgia, that can't happen. So this has been backed through review again, and changed the offending language. And so staff is recommending approval of this MOU again.
Can you explain the purpose of this?
Purpose of this, it has to do with operational technology. The Georgia Cyber Center, obviously, they're in the business of trying to train people in order to do cybersecurity. They approached us, and they had extensive conversations with Mr. Gordon at Water Utility about learning from them and, and really seeing what they could do to help us with improving our security on our data system. But we do have other applications as well for operational technology, and that includes traffic engineering. There's opportunities there for us to learn from them and them to learn from us, establish that partnership.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next?
Right. Next item I have for you is a T-Mobile contract for a county camp tower attachment. You're aware that we have several towers that are part of our broadband network. One of the reasons that we have those towers, they do support county operations, but we also offer what's called co-location space, where we'll let a company come in and build a facility there and put their antenna on that tower. We already have agreements with, with other companies, and this one is from T-Mobile that wants to have an attachment on the counter, county camp tower. So if you have T-Mobile in the Apling area and you don't like your service, prove it. Their proposal has an overall value for the, over the life of the agreement for $723,454.35, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
All right. The next item I have for you is the ESRI, or ESRI, subscription renewal payment for 2023.4. You've heard me use the phrase enterprise agreement in the past. This is basically a renewal of our ongoing enterprise agreement that we have with ESRI. The cost of that is $110,000, which is budgeted in the GIS department's operating budget for this.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
And the final item I have for you is agreement with ESRI for Art GIS Urban Online. Urban is a new product. It's something we haven't used before, but it's a web-based 3D solution that applies GIS specifically to urban planning. It lets folks in Mr. Sterling's departments create plans. They can do this, this online. They can do 3D modeling. It's, it's really interesting how this works, because it uses our existing GIS data to really bring the plans to life. So it gives them a different perspective on that, streamlines the planning process, and also has the ability where they can share that throughout the organization and outside if we want to. The implementation cost of this software is $30,000. Annual cost is $12,000, so our total year one cost is $42,016, which is paid for out of the planning operating budget. And the future GIS is going to budget for the operating cost, which will be the In the future, GIS is going to budget for the operating cost, which will be the $12,000 per year. Staff recommends approval.
Is this a multi-year contract?
It's going to go on our enterprise agreement. So the agreement you just authorized me to pay, next year you will see that $12,000 as part of that agreement.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. I think the first, for the first time in history, you are to the, you are to the black in this. You've got more positives than, than you spent. Very good, very good, thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Blanchard?
Come in.
Very good, thank you. I don't have any other items on that part of the agenda. Are there any legal matters? Legal matters? Moving into staff reports.
First item, just for your information, is our personnel savings for 2023. You can see that the total savings for FY23 so far are $906,598. We're continuing to look through that. We're in the budget cycle now. We're looking at every position, whether vacant or people that are asking for new positions and kind of keeping this in consideration. You'll also see our monthly turnover rate for January. We have exceeded the 1,400 number as it relates to employees, but you can see our turnover rate, that monthly percentage is 1.27%. And still have one of the best citizen-to-employee ratios in the state.
Any questions? Next.
The first report I have for you is the Year Today Budget Report. This is for the month ended January 31st, where we should be operating around 58%. And all funds are operating well within their budgets at this time.
Next.
The second report is the SPOLOST update. We have received funding for the month of December. That amount was just over $3.2 million. Our annualized percentage increase is 9.17%, which is 12.2% higher than last month and almost 5% higher than last December.
All-time high month, right?
I will tell you too, just while we're talking about SPOLOST, this does finish out our 17 to 22 SPOLOST collections with the December payment coming in. We did end up collecting a little over $160 million. We had $144 million programmed in that SPOLOST. So we are allowed to use the overage of that SPOLOST money for projects that were in that SPOLOST. So staff is getting together now and looking at some opportunities to be able to apply those monies to some of the projects. Just to make you aware of one big one that's been put on my radar recently, and the sheriff, I may have mentioned it last night to some of you that were in attendance at a meeting that he was there, is looking to upgrade the radios for 911, the actual radios that people carry as part of 911. That is a significant purchase. It's going to be probably a little under $5 million, but we do have...
Tell me it was going to be about 600,000.
What's that?
Tell me 400,000 upfront and about two, I'm round numbers.
It's about 4.6 million is the number that I've seen.
Sandbagging me.
Most recently. I'm not saying that that's something that we will absolutely do, but certainly with the surplus that we have here, we have a $16 million surplus. And it was collected in the last quarter, so it's allowed to be spent on these projects, but it will have to be spent on the projects. So we're going to go back and identify the projects that need the additional funding, and we'll bring that back to the board.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any way we can accelerate payment on debt.
Do we have any callable debt? I don't think we have any additional callable debt. If there is, Mr. Chairman, yes. So if we have any callable debt, we can absolutely accelerate the funding on that. We'll see if we have any.
We already have from this money set aside to pay off one of, one of the GEO bonds.
One of the bonds, yes. So we're going to pay that one off. But if there's anything else that's callable that we can fast-forward, we will use some of this funding or present this funding back to you to use that to pay off the debt.
I would love to get to the point where we don't have any debt. I realize it's minimal at best, but...
Right, sure. We'll look at that. We'll take a look at that as, as expenditure, bring it back to the board.
What is the deadline by which we must spend all of these SPOLOST funds?
There's not. I mean, we've had, when I first took over as the county manager, we were operating from a SPOLOST that was 10 or 11, 12 years old. So we've been, we've tried to be more aggressive. We've got a really good staff in place now. We have more regular meetings where we're talking about this. We do this every month. Mr. Prather and his group are doing a great job of getting these projects off. But I think even though they are six-year SPOLOST, the average of finishing out an entire SPOLOST is probably somewhere in that 10 to 12-year range, mostly because you don't even collect all your funding until end of year six. And by the time you start planning for that, it may take two or three years to get those projects finished, so...
There's not a sunset if you don't spend it by this date.
There's not. So there, you face arbitrage on, on, on bond, potentially, but not on SPOLOST dollars. It's just a matter of practice. We don't, we don't like to have a lot of unspent SPOLOST money. The voters intended this to be spent on the projects that they approved, so it's our job to make sure that we spend it on the projects they approved. So we're...
Right, right. But then again, if we generate 10, 20, 30 million more and we can retire debt, then...
Yes, oh, yes, right. Well, debt retirement was actually one of the projects they approved. So yeah, we can do that.
Any other comments on the SPOLOST? And investment report?
Yes, attached is the investment report for your information.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions? Are there, Ms. Reese, is there anything else for your presentation today? Is there any other commissioner or public comment? I have nothing for executive session, so we will adjourn and come back in?
About five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you.